It's Christine.
Wait, am I going to get started?
All right, thank you.
We'll start the meeting with a pledge of the flag. My pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, in whose name we stand. Welcome everybody to the August 17th, 2023 Village Board Meeting. The first order of business is a public hearing to consider proposed resolution to authorize the Anadog County Board of Elections to conduct the Village of Baldwinsville general elections and to authorize the payment of rent from the Board of Elections Voting Machines for the voting machines. Can I get reading approval publication, Jody?
Notice here by giving that pursuant to section 7-706 of the Village Law of the State of New York in pursuit to resolution of the Village Board of the Village of Baldwinsville adopted August 3rd, 2023, a public hearing will be held by the Village Board of the Village of Baldwinsville at the Village Hall, 16 Western SE Street, Baldwinsville, New York, 13027, on the 17th day of August 2023 at 7:35 PM. Consider a proposed resolution to authorize the Anadog County Board of Elections to conduct the Village of Baldwinsville general elections and authorize the payment of rent of Board of Elections Voting Machines. At the time and place of the hearing, all interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard by order of the Village Board of the Village of Baldwinsville dated August 3rd, 2023, Baldwinsville, New York.
Thank you. Anyone's willing, wishing to speak in favor of the proposal? Anybody wishing to speak against the proposal? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn and close the public hearing?
A moment.
Second.
All in favor?
Can I ask a question? Since the public hearing was published for 7:35, do we need to wait three more minutes before we close it?
All right, we got about another 30 seconds.
Well, depends on what o'clock you're looking at.
Mine's 7:32 right now.
All right, we'll leave that open until 7:35. Let me know when it gets 7:35, I'll go back.
Thank you, Rick.
Move on to the regular...
My was published for 7:35, but that's up there.
Well, because of their pledge and...
You're good at this long version.
Oh, the long version. Does my version of the pledge?
Need to sign the initial...
Mike said he had a scratchy third, let's send him.
Extended version.
Can I get a motion to approve Village Board Meeting Minutes from August 3rd, 2023 meeting?
Second.
Any questions, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? How long are we on time here? If I get started with something, I have to stop. Well, should we close the public hearing?
Two more minutes.
I'm looking for guidance from the...
I'll write it down, Joe's gonna say it.
Our various...
I can't say it.
We can reopen and correct when somebody comes in.
Okay. All right, so can I get a motion to adjourn and close the public hearing unless someone comes in?
I think we had the motion in the second.
Now we need to vote. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Close, carry. Citizens comments, Matt, you're up.
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board, Chief, Chuck. Here behalf of Taste of Beville, last year we had, kind of last minute, we had Mr. Stevens and Chief Lethencheck sign letters to authorize the state booker authority to issue more than four permits for that day. It looks like we're probably going to have five, maybe six vendors, so we don't have all the forms signed yet, but I wanted to come see if I can get approval to sign those letters once all the vendors have their forms signed by you.
I've already signed one letter, Jody has that. We have a letter here to send into the state saying we intend to have more than, expect more than four. And again, at some point when we get more than four, then I'll sign it.
I have one right here. I have one for San Miguel with me.
Matt, what's the date of that event?
The 16th of September.
You want to bring that up, I can sign that, give it to Jody. You can, you got any discussion, anything you might have to, anybody, why don't you go ahead and I'm filming this up?
That's really it, just waiting on a couple of vendors to get this done and then I think everything else is pretty well in place. Security, sheriffs, veterans, it's pretty well ready to go. Maybe Chuck and I can connect over the next couple of weeks to make sure things are ready for the day of.
No problem.
Typical setup and everything.
What's the drop dead date for the missing vendors? The 15th or December?
This they should have done within a couple of days.
Yeah, I haven't stopped down, Julie tells me there's a couple years to sign.
So will the board be issuing a letter like last year and I'll be issuing a letter as well?
Allowing more than four?
Whatever it says, I'm totally forward to do whatever I wrote last year.
Yeah, I have a copy of it right here.
I guess what we need is a motion authorizing me to sign this letter and for Mike to sign the letter also. Somebody wants to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to allow the village to issue a letter for more than four alcohol permits or licenses for everyone home.
Yep.
I'll second.
Any other discussion on that?
Could you just modify that to include the police department?
To include the police department's approval as well.
Thank you.
You're part of the village, right?
But this way it covers what I was writing for. Thank you.
So we have a motion to second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry now. Do we mind a hold on to this letter, Jody, until we get more than four?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. And I'll sign it and you have it?
Yeah.
You can send it in whenever you get number five.
Yeah.
You could probably jump right away if it doesn't get to five, you doesn't need a letter.
What's that?
So you probably can do it right away, if it doesn't get to five, you just won't need a letter, don't you be waiting on us for the letter?
He's expecting more than four.
Yeah, I'm pretty, I'm positive it shouldn't be more than four, so I just assume rather have the make, by not sending this in, that puts a little, makes them get this part done, so I'd rather they get that done before we move forward.
Very good, anything else, sir?
Yeah, you could sign it and leave it with Jody and she just won't mail it until...
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
Very good, Matt, thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
That's it, citizens' comments. On to trustees' comments, we'll start with Nate.
I was just taking the agenda.
Ruth?
Jeff? I need to call a brief, I shouldn't say brief, I need to call an executive session for a personal matter. And other than that, I'll stick with the agenda.
Okay. Eric?
We need to add items D and E. D would be accept the bids for the Canton Street well electrical project and then also to award those bids.
Okay.
Take yours first, and I'll stick to the agenda otherwise.
All right. Megan?
Just the agenda, thank you.
Bruce?
Not anymore, I'll stick to the agenda.
Perfect. You were ready to do that one, Eric didn't know that?
First come, first served.
There you go. I got a few things. The, we got a, I'm stealing a little of Jux Thunder, but I think it's nicer if I do it and if he does it, because it's about him type of thing. We, last week I was on Edgewood Drive and I saw three of our village trucks. Danny was there and I think Adam, and I don't, I didn't see who else was in the truck, the other truck. So I said to Danny, "What are you doing?" He said, "I have this guy's having a problem, every time it rains hard, water runs into his yard, so we're going to put a little berm at the end of his driveway." Yeah, sounds nice, nice and simple. So we got a beautiful letter, "Want to thank you for the paving job last Friday at the end of my drive, but what a pleasant surprise to come home to. Please thank all the workers for me, came out better than I could have hoped, and I watched the recent rain just roll right past my driveway instead of coming in. It's obvious great care was taken to make it look nice and be effective, what a beautiful job. I just want you and your crew to know how much I appreciate the workmanship. Joe Salini." So, when you're, when you're the mayor, I mean you get enough listen that people complain about things that sometimes aren't even our fault, but it's nice when somebody takes the time to thank us for something that was a very, sort of a simple job, simple, I would say maybe it's not as simple as it looked to me, but it was well done, well received, guys grateful for it, and we've got a happy customer. So Chuck, I know you've probably already talked with Danny and the crew, but just again, pass on my appreciation for job well done. And that brings up another subject. People who have problems in the village, I know you probably don't want to burden me or the chief or Chuck or Jody or whoever, but I'd much rather get a phone call from you about a problem on your street than to read about it on Facebook. The village doesn't take care of things, you know, sometimes we don't know about things that you're having a problem with, and if you call, we can take care of it right away. Instead, it gets on Facebook and then people who don't even live in Baldwins who all start insulting us and... I can handle your comments, if you're complaining or criticizing us, call me, I'm big enough for that. And I'm sure Chuck would much rather talk to you and hear your concern than have somebody say, "Did you see Facebook, they're talking about how this didn't get taken care of? Am I right, Chuck?"
No, no.
So, you know, there's always ways to get ahold of us. And there's nobody in the DPW, at the time you call Village Hall, they'll get a message. They leave me messages and say people called, I try to call them back the same day or at least the next day. So there's just a favor I would ask of people, is give us a fighting chance before it becomes a public spectacle on Facebook. This is probably more Mark Baker's alley, but the community scholarship foundation has got a golf tournament coming up on the 30th of September at noon at the Wood. It's 75 bucks a golfer for nine holes, it includes dinner and lots of prizes for all different kinds of, you know, closest to the hole, longest drive, that type of stuff. And all that money goes to support a scholarship fund, and if you've ever watched the awards for scholarships, I mean it's awesome, the number of kids who will come up there and get handed an envelope, and it, you know, may not pay for college, but it may help buy books or, you know, whatever little thing that goes along with going to college, and it's a nice pat on the back, most of the kids are good students, they've done something to deserve the scholarship, and I know Mark is a big part of that for years. And so if you like playing golf and you want to help support the scholarship fund, I'm trying to see here the best place, the best person to contact.
It's golf@bevillvolunteers.org.
Yeah, golf@bevillscholars.org.
And I can, I'll just add that the scholarship that we're raising funds for is specifically our, our relatively new scholarship, it's our Founder's Award, and it's intended to be a four-year scholarship, so the student that wins that scholarship gets money each of the four years that they are in school, which, because we know, you know, most of the scholarships, they get the first year, and then they're left to their own devices a lot of times for years.
It's amazing how this was through all, at the very beginning, you know, it was kind of a small little thing, now it's like, better sit back and relax, because this is going to take a while to get all those kids up there, but it's terrific, I mean, I think it's great for our community, everybody who has anything to do with it. So many of the scholarships are named in honor of, you know, people who are gone, you know, the R. Carolos and people like that that get recognized, and so you can't go wrong supporting the scholarship fund.
It'll no longer take them all up on stage. It's a different process.
Yeah, I realize that, but okay. Just so the board knows, back in the spring when the legislature was in session and offering up bills for the state, one of the things they proposed is not having pilot money be included in the tax cap manipulations. You know, you plug in all these things including all your pilot money. You only have a 2% tax cap, there's not a whole lot of wiggle room, and you start chiseling away at 2%, and suddenly we're looking at, you know, 1%, and everything else is going up 7%, 8%. It costs us. So this has been approved by the Senate and the Assembly, it's on the governor's desk. I am told that in the past, the previous governor Cuomo did not want to mess around with the tax cap, so he would just veto it every time. There is some thought that our current governor is feeling some political pressure and that she might sign it to win favor with some of the smaller communities that are affected. So, that would be good news for us. I don't know, they have till the end of the year, so unfortunately our budget will be figured out, unless she signs it in November or something, but we got a report from the kayak people that in three weeks, from when it opened till August 1st, we had 36 rentals. So I guess over the course of a month, we'd have at least 40, and hopefully it's, the weather stays nice so people continue to rent them. So the word is out and people are using them. The Chamber of Commerce put out a plea for the, I think it's the Taste of Beville, yes, on the 16th of September, they need volunteers. Anybody who would like to come in for a two-hour shift and help them, call the Chamber at 638-0550. I posted this on Facebook and 67 people had already said that they were looking, if somebody had called and left a message, other people were going to call and sign up, so the more the merrier. I'm sure that it'd be a fun time to be out there in the middle of that event, plus there's a lot of good food to eat. I have one question for you, Chuck, have we corralled a Christmas tree yet for...
We have not.
We have not?
No, we have not looked at carpentry.
I know you've been busy, but somebody left, sent me a message and said they had a tree and I told them to call you, I'll go back and take a look.
Send me the address, we'll go take a look at it.
I'll remind them to give me another call.
Okay.
That's all I got. We'll move on to department heads. Attorney, Bob?
I'll stick with the agenda.
Village clerk?
I'd like to make, put on the agenda, authorize the board to approve the ESI Employee Assistance Program at a cost of $3,000 per year.
ESI, okay.
We need to add that it's going to be split through.
Okay.
We need to add that it's getting paid four ways. We need to add that we're expanding four ways, the cost, does that not matter?
I don't know, do we need to put it, I think that will just happen.
Yeah, that'll just happen when we...
All right, so that becomes item F, agenda. Anything else, Jody?
No, that'll be all, thank you.
Mr. Baker?
Just to reiterate, to ask you, let's take new business item B, either, I don't know what the proper process is, but either table it or remove it from the agenda for this week while we sort out this other fund or these other funds that we found and come up with one of the best ways to skin the cap.
Do we need to vote to table that or can we just do that?
You could just do that.
Okay. Can I get a motion to table item B on tonight's new business agenda?
No.
Questions, remark? Seeing none?
Item C is still good.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? Carry.
Stick to the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Senior Senator, Ruth?
Well, it's been a busy week in senior center, Monday it was our car show, it was successful, the weather cooperated, so that's the huge piece. I want to thank the DPW for their help setting up, it makes a big difference and they do a great job helping us prepare for that, and thanks to the car owners in the community for supporting the event. It was a great night, a fun night, and like I said, we're glad we didn't get poured on because we've had that experience before. Also, the Rotary last night hosted the senior citizen picnic and there was over 100 people there for that, and we want to thank the Rotary for that, it's an annual event that the seniors look forward to and truly enjoy, and the Rotarians worked very hard to give them a very pleasant and fun evening, so thanks to the Rotary for that. Coming up, I just have to mention the walk, which we talked about last time, but it's in September, it is a Thursday evening instead of a Saturday, so it's September 14th at 4:00 PM, everybody's welcome to participate in that. It's a pretty low-key walk from our property up to the McCary property, loop back around with a rest stop, Rita Nasset waiting for you with some goodies at the McCary area, and we'll have some refreshments as well, so come out and join us for that. And other than that, unless anybody has any questions? Thank you.
Car show was very good. Enjoyed it. Superintendent Public Works, Chuck?
Our black top is done, that was finished up a couple of weeks ago, that went very well, we're real happy with that contractor. The storm, the storm was a big news here last week, it was, the cell was really not a big, big cell, but came right across 690 and Canton Street and just took the pump station out there on the Ellsworth Road, ripped a bunch of trees out, ripped the bottom of the creek right out there, which was another problem because that's still plugged, and that plugging up will back up our, will back up our pump station, and responsibility falls on the homeowners to clear that out. I was talking with the DEC and I said, "Well, good luck with that, that's expensive to get that stuff out of there." Well, come to find out, the county does have a stream department in the water and stream, and he met with me yesterday, and we're going to get down there and just pull the stuff out that's affecting us. We went down and made a path for those guys to get in there today, we took about six loads out of there, and we're going to work with them next week and get that cleaned up, and I mean, there's concrete that came over the top of that road, it's just, it's just going to plug back up again the next storm. So, we're thankful for the county, they're going to help us and they'll work with us and we'll get it out, get that, get that cleaned up, that area cleaned up. It was pretty scary, I had some seasoned people there, that was there at midnight, they said it came up over that wall, it came up over 10 feet, we've never seen it that high, just almost washed their truck right out of there. And the water moves, it moves fast, the guys were right in the middle of it, they get out of there, and other than that, we didn't, I mean, I know, I know some people got it, but we've had some calls about, can you put in for damage, and I believe you can put in for it, you know, get to the village or Van Buuren, and they'll send it to the county, and if it meets that threshold, you'll get some money out of what they're saying now, I don't think it's going to get that high. So, other than that, the water department's still flushing hydrants, we've been flushing hydrants for about a week now, they've got the south side done, I think Candlewick is done, they're going to the Four Corners, we'll have it tonight, and hopefully within the next week or so, we'll finish up the north side, north side's bigger, we'll get all those hydrants. We usually flush them every four or five years, and we're having some pretty good luck getting through them without any, without too many issues. The Lock Street, that was, there's been a lot of talk about the Lock Street project down there and the high grass, and the problem we're having is, a lot of that lot is undeveloped lot, and they don't fall into the same jurisdiction as, as, as normal residents or developed lots. So, we had called a developer and he had cut it once, and I called him again Monday, and it is getting really high again there, and so is sidewalks, and they have a machine down there now, they're going to go through it. He's just a great developer, he's just a great, he's a great developer, and if you just hang in there a little bit, we'll get that place looking nice down there, but I believe tomorrow, the 1st of the week, they're going to get back in there and cut it back down again, and that should help things there a little bit. Other than that, unless there's questions? Northside?
I thought it was interesting that the, a lot of people don't understand the purpose of drainage swales, that one up on Smokey Hollow and Canterbury and them backyards there, you have one picture, it looked like a lake, and the next morning there was no water.
Right, and the one that's right, I forgot that part, we had an EPA audit this week, it was a two-day EPA audit, which hadn't been done in over 20 years, and it was around the swales and the drainage, and it was very intense and very thorough. They're pretty happy with that one, that one ditch that we cleaned out last year, there was four foot of water in that and it was gone the next day, and we couldn't get water out of there for years. The Warner Ave project that we did last year, I was there at midnight and the lady came out and she said, "I want to thank you," I was just, what's that? She says, "I've lived there a lot of years, we've always flooded out, this year we did none." So they didn't have a lot of trouble down there on Warner Ave either. They had some trouble coming out to the C Street by Namies, Namies got it hard there when they came down through there, but the Warner Ave did not flood out. The EPA audit went okay, it just hadn't been done in a long time, two weeks before that, the whole night security was here and some other issues, but that went well too, and it's been a busy couple of weeks.
Good job for everybody. Chief?
Yeah, obviously there's been some media attention this week with the situation with the school, just to kind of recap what happened there, Monday morning, the superintendent contacted me that they had come to work on Monday at the district office, and clerical staff there had heard a voicemail that had been left Friday evening making some, some generic threats to the school. So, superintendent working myself, Lieutenant Lockwood, and we, our officers have been working that case pretty steadily throughout the week, trying to determine, A, where this call originated, was there any real threat to the community, and trying to work this case as best we could. So we've been in regular contact with the school, with Dr. Barberry up there, the superintendent, to ensure the safety and wellness of the staff, the students, because they've got some summer school activity up there, as well as some sports and the March Band and different things going on. So, we've had extra officers up there, that the school reverses for, posted up there, so we've worked cooperatively very well, we've been with the district, but it's taken a lot, a lot of man-hours this week for us to work on that, we've had help from outside agencies and resources as well, again, just trying to determine the validity of this. At this point in time, we don't think there's any danger to the community, nor was there, but obviously in this day and age, we take everything very seriously and aggressively investigate what's going on. So, that's where we are with that, it's incidents like that that crop up, then obviously, you know, create a lot of turmoil and stress, parents get fearful, students, things along those lines, so we try and do everything we can to alleviate those fears to the community so we can report as much information as there or as least possible as to what is going on. So that's where.
Very comforting knowing that we have a police force to react, so thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, that's it with department heads pending business. I give a motion to authorize the Anadog County Board of Elections to conduct the Village of Baldwinsville general elections and to authorize the payment of rent from the Board of Elections, for the Board, oh yeah, for the Board of Elections Voting Machines. Moved.
Clear discussion on this?
Yes.
At some point though, I know that they're pushing us, we feel like there's a push to, but we do have terrible voter turnout typically with the spring elections. This is an added cost, the county's kind of pushing our hands here, and I get that, and I don't love that aspect of it, but it is an added expense to hold our own elections in the spring. I think we should, you know, do it this time, but I think it's your consideration of moving those elections at some point in time.
Fair enough. The cost is 1,500 to 2,000.
Yeah, that's...
And we spend, when we have the elections ourselves, we spend over $1,000 anyway, so it's not like a huge extra expense. I mean, what it does is it means that we don't have to find election inspectors, that kind of stuff, which, which hasn't been a problem, but...
I have a feeling this may just be the start of the expenses, and I could see them tweaking that a little more and more each year, at some point in time, it's going to be...
If they, if they move us, if we want to move to November, then there's no cost to us.
No, yes, I get that. How much does a voting machine cost?
I have the price list, I know they did give us the price list.
Go until they can move a new one?
Well, they've got to know what's coming.
Yeah, the new ones are rolling out this year.
You're not allowed to...
They'll have to go back to a paper ballot.
You can't use a ballot box?
There is some, I don't think you can use them.
Didn't we just do that with the judge?
But, no, I mean, I think they've said, you can't use paper ballots anymore, right?
They haven't said that, no, they didn't, they didn't.
Okay, I thought there was something about paper ballots.
But we just, I mean, paper ballots, I mean, it just looks antiquated with, with our system, I mean, everybody else has these, you know, machines, and we look antiquated with paper ballots, that's really it.
Frankly, to be effective with the 300 or 400 people that pop up for elections, I mean, it seems like the, the spring election has the problem with it, I mean, I do appreciate the fact that people have to know what they're voting for, not just showing up to vote for a Republican or Democrat, have to know the candidates, but unfortunately, the reality is people aren't coming out to vote, you know, it's a sad state of democracy really, more than anything. It's a sad state of democracy, really, more than anything, but...
You're, you're right.
I don't know how to fully fix that issue, but, you know, something to consider in the future. I think I'm in my mind already here, so I'll be...
Your opinion is just as valuable as any, so thank you. So we have, any other comments?
I just wanted to remind the board that this resolution is subject to permissive referendum, so that there's a notice that it'll be published, and a petition would have to be filed within 30 days.
Okay.
Do you know if there's still villages holding elections in June? Did the fan bill, if somebody used to...
Some of them, some of them hold them in June.
Yes, they have a list appearing.
They have them going through the same...
As a matter of fact, I think Liverpool might hold it in June.
Liverpool's gonna be switching, I believe. They're gonna be switching. That's what Dennis said. Or Dustin.
Okay.
It's likely June.
Yeah, that would be nice, sir. Okay, we have a motion in second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Move on to new business. Can I get a motion to authorize additional pay at 75 dollars per meeting? An additional pay rate for Mary Augustus in the short term to complete meeting minutes from the monthly ARB, ZBA, and planning board meetings? All in motion?
I'll second for discussion. We've been requested to try and come up with a monetary, some sort of boundary to what we're approving. I mean, 75 dollars per meeting, there's X number of meetings, what, the additional pay rate to do minutes?
Well, since she will be working in, not in the code office, she won't be able as part of daily work, do that. So she may have to stay an hour or two, like after her normal four o'clock go-ahead time, to type up minutes.
Is there any way to quantify this?
Until we find somebody to replace her in the codes, which we are working on, but I don't know how you would...
Currently, right now, she does make 75 dollars per meeting. But again, she, right, that's the same. But again, she's gonna be doing, she has these meeting minutes now, when is she gonna be doing them, you know?
And this has additional pay rate?
Right.
Are we saying we're authorizing additional hours at the rate she makes, or are we changing the rate to do the minutes?
It's, it's whatever you decide.
Well, I think it's extending hours at the current pay rate.
Then I think we should say that.
Yeah, as well.
How I read it was 75 dollars per meeting, so...
That's per meeting.
She can stay for three hours, and it's still 75 dollars if she completes those minutes.
The other additional thing is, a week later, or two weeks later, when she's typing up the minutes, I, we don't want her taking time, she's gonna be working in the court in the morning.
Yes.
We don't want her spending court time typing up zoning board minutes.
Yes.
So this authorizes her to stay, pass the work time, maybe at 6 o'clock one night, and type up the minutes.
For 75 dollars?
No. Or whatever her pay rate is.
Okay, so how this reads is per meeting?
Yeah, we, we should say at her current pay rate.
So is she, is she already getting 75 dollars per meeting?
Yes.
And, or this says an additional pay at 75 dollars per meeting? Is she getting another 75 dollars per meeting?
No, that's gonna be the, her current pay rate, because we have to do that now that she's not going to be in codes.
So we're basically authorizing her hours at her current pay rate in order to complete the planning, the, the board meeting minutes?
Right.
Whatever meetings those might be.
So 75 dollars being, they're just confusing things.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean the...
Well, we just gotta say, we're still gonna pay her the 75 bucks to be at the meetings.
The additional amount.
We don't, you know how long it takes to do the typing?
She has to, you know, I know she transcribes them, and she listens to them, and then she transcribes them, I don't know how long it takes.
Right, depends on whether there's an issue or not.
Right, depends a lot how long the meeting, which meeting is.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes their meetings are, they meet to, just to discuss something, take, you know, Nate would know, there's sometimes you really don't have an agenda, it's just...
Yeah, sometimes, two hours.
Sometimes they're there for three or four hours, and she still gets...
Put in something, a number, 20 hours, 40 hours, and if she gets to that point, we still haven't filled her position, we do this again, as opposed to have an open-ended...
We can do that.
Yeah.
Up, up to a maximum of 30 hours or something?
What, any number, it works for me.
Up to a maximum of 30 hours. Because, I mean, hopefully, we'll have somebody before it gets that far.
Correct.
And she can do this on, like, an additional time, like, after 4 o'clock or weekend, or whenever she...
It's given on Saturday for a couple of hours, you get done, and nobody's around, that's, that's fine.
So we need to amend the motion, or is that just unamended?
I'll amend it.
Jody, I think Jody's got all the notes.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? And if anybody out there is looking for a part-time job in codes? It's an interesting job, you're dealing with all kinds of stuff all the time? Get ahold of Chuck? After I said if anybody's looking for a job, oh, it's gonna hold you.
It's all in...
No, that part doesn't need to be in there. All right, we got a motion in the second? All in favor?
Aye.
We already did that. No, no, we didn't, no, we're done.
Discussion.
Item B is tabled. The next one, motion to approve budget modifications to recognize receipt of the Main Street grant funds from Gannadog County, along with the expenditure of these funds, by passing them back to the property owners, all this during the 2023, 2024 budget year.
Moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can I get a motion to accept the bids for the electrical work to be done at the Canton Street? Well...
Move, second. Discussion. I want to share some things with you, because I hope people would care. There were four bids, they ranged from 285,800 dollars up to 540,000.
That would keep you in suspense.
Until we act on this one.
All right, so we got a motion to, to accept all the bids. All in favor? Opposed, carried. Now, can I get a motion to award the bid for the Canton Street project, too?
Oh, man.
Is your bid...
D-I-E-K-O-W.
Di-Cow.
Di-Cow Electrical Incorporated at 285,800 dollars. Thank you for the pronunciation.
Yes.
Can I get a motion to accept that?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions?
So it was a little bit, this was a little bit...
That is a little bit.
It is a little bit, yeah. And the engineer did check into the company, we never heard from the company, but they, they're confident with it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's been a while coming, Chuck.
Thank you.
Let's get that maybe done.
Get us started.
Can I get a motion to approve the village's participation in the ESI Employee Assistance Program at a cost of 3,000 dollars a year to the village?
Motion.
Second.
We've got a discussion. Just, Shepard, you've got a point, though. I mean, we, Mark, need to have a line item, these are being attributed to?
Just off the top of my head, I would probably have one of the non-departmental line items for employee benefits. So it's the same kind of place where medical insurance falls, and our share of FICA and Medicare, life insurance, things like that, seems like probably the best way to do it. I was looking at the state's chart of accounts while we were talking about it, and they don't have a specific one for Employee Assistance Program, but they have Employee Benefits Other, and they ask you to specify, so I, I would run it by the accounting people at, like, Nycomer somewhere, and ask them, but I think that's where it should go. So now it's not, breaking that out by department would be impossible, you know? How do you know what part of the 3,000 is the police and the, you know? Unless you just divide it by four, and say quarters, DPW, quarters clerk, quarters police.
So it's sort of all of your employee benefits?
Yeah.
How soon, after we approve this, will this, will we have it in effect?
I have to actually give a call into her tomorrow, because she was, you know, waiting shit out last time, so I will find out tomorrow, I don't...
I think this is a great idea for our employees, and at a, at a very reasonable cost. All right, we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Thank you for bringing that up, Jody, Mike, and Chuck, and, you know? I think our employees would be pleased to hear that we've taken that step. Any other business before we go into executive session?